Good morning. This is the last day of August, eight thirty one twenty two. And it is nine oh one A M. Uh, the Clark County Council, Clark County, Washington, begins today with a work session on the subject of ARPA. There were three particular proposals on which we felt the need for additional information uh before making a any type of decision. And uh those uh three are the downtown campus space planning and we'll do them in this order. And then the North County EMS station and then the Y M C A pool project out of Battleground. Um, we've already asked Michelle Schuster um and perhaps Mark Gassaway as well. Questions with regard to the downtown campus space planning. So we'll proceed with them in that we um have decided to make our dialogue this morning be Q and A primarily. So um, Michelle, if you would um get underway, we'd appreciate it.
Can we bring up the presentation? Go ahead, go to slide two. So in two thousand and twenty one, we began a space planning effort to review all of our current spaces and our future space needs. And we did hire on a consultant, Ming Analysis, to help us with this, moving this project forward. Um, we had two groups of people we were working with. Um, the steering committee, which is made up of higher level of directors, managers, judges, undersheriff, and then also our work groups, which are people from the operational areas of the departments who really know the day to day operational needs of their areas. Go to the second slide, please. Um, what you're gonna see is a lot of conceptual drawings. These are not what the final uh plans will look like um that will go out to bid. This was just to see, is there enough space in our buildings to do what we need to do? And so as we go through these, they are not the final drawings, just so everyone knows. Next slide, please. So we've got some required space planning needs, and those are for our family law annex and our children's justice center. Both of those leases, we are in a lease building, expire in May of two thousand and twenty four. We are in talks with the new um leasing agent for the G Angelo Group to see if there's any possibility of keeping those buildings. But we have been told no a number of times, and they are hoping to get back to us this week with a final answer. Um, if those leases cannot be extended, we will need to move the two facilities, Family Law Annex and C J C. And what we're hoping to do is move those into the public service center, onto the first floor and the fifth floor. And to be able to do that, we did need to relocate animal control and code enforcement, which have already been moved to the Dolly Building. That was a cheap um quick fix. And then we'll need to relocate the communications department to the sixth floor, human resources to the sixth floor, consolidate and relocate the permit services for community development to the third floor, consolidate I T to half of their current space, consolidate the Otter's office to a portion of their space. And then we'll be able to reconfigure that first and fifth floor to fit the family law since C J C. We're estimating these costs of about fifteen point five million dollars to complete those. And go to the next slide, please. And then the second part that is definitely required of our space planning is to secure funding for the engineering architectural bid documentations to go out for our jail bed renovation and remodel project. And so typically, engineering architecture is about seven to ten percent of expected cost for the project. And we're expecting this project to be fairly significant in price tag. And so we are estimating that it'll run about seven to ten million dollars to do the engineering architectural bid documenting for this. Um, the future funding will be requested for the actual construction. This would just be to get us started in the actual process to do that expansion bed capacity. Next slide, please. So this is the current conditions of the fifth floor of the P S C. Um, as you see, I T is located on the north portion, and then the Otters and H R are down on the southern side of the building. You can go to the next slide, please. And then this is just the conceptual drawing um to show that we could fit C J C um the Children's Justice Center onto this floor. If we consolidate I T to the northwest component and then the Otters to the north or the southwest, and then we'd be able to fit in what is needed for C J C in the, in the pink and uh fuchsia colors on this map. Next drawing, please, or next slide. And this is just sort of conceptual drawing of what the lobby um waiting areas for C J C could look like in this space. Next one, please. And then this is the current conditions of our first floor. Um, currently, we have clean water that is on the northwest corner and then the permit center, which is on the northeast of the building. And then we've got the medical examiner downstairs um in the south um west corner. We've got R T C sort of there in the middle, and then we've got the vacant dragonfly um restaurant space. And then if you could go to the next drawing. So this shows basically taking all of that area that is currently vacant and art where R T C is at and change it into the family law annex. And this is again just conceptual to show that it would be able to house three courtrooms, judicial areas, um waiting spaces, and some court admin. Next slide, please. The next item are low to medium cost items that it, that um are not mandated because there is nothing happening that these areas have to have this done. It's just for better flow function, use of their spaces. And so in the P S C, the prosecuting attorney is outgrowing their space and needs a couple more offices. Um, and with the space we have on their floor, we can blow out a wall and build a couple more offices behind their current location. And then over at the courthouse, we would be possibly looking at doing a reconfiguration of the law library to expand a couple more court administration offices, uh reconfigure the jury assembly room for some better flow and function, new furniture for the clerks areas, and this one has moved up in priority. Um, before it was better flow function A D A access, but we are now also running to fire code regulations because of how compacted that area is and with the barriers we've put up because of COVID. We're now being told because of fire regulations that those barriers can't stay in place, but we need to have that separation for people. To do that, we need to get some new furniture. And then the last one would be to reconfigure and renovate courtroom G one, which is one of the larger courtrooms over there, but it is um not functional as it is, and so we would be looking at doing some better flow function for that courtroom. Next slide, please. So this is the current first floor of the courthouse um on the uh northwest or north component, which is over there. Uh, that's clerk's area. That's what we would renovate with new furniture to have better flow. As you can see, there's tight squeezes between offices and pillars and stuff that make it really hard for A D A access in that area. And then on the southern portion, we have the jury assembly room and the law library. And if you go to the next slide. So this is just a closer view of current conditions of the law library, which is in green and the jury assembly room, which is in the sort of beigeish orange color. And then if you could go to the next slide. This is what it could look like as option A, which um would take and make additional court administration offices and change the layout of the law, law library a little bit to allow that. And then downstairs, you'll see, as you come into the jury assembly room, it would move where the um staff is placed. Go down just a little bit. Um, is placed so that there's better um flow through that area and visibility for that staff as people coming to the area. So those would be low cost items, but not mandated. And then if we could go to the next slide. These are higher cost items. This would be taking the current corrections building and pre-renovating the ground floor. To do that, we would need to move out the sheriff areas that are in there, internal affairs, six pender registration, jail records, criminal records, warrants, I T and finance. And then also we'd be moving the major crimes, which is currently on the second floor of the Hamilton Building. And we would relocate those all over possibly to the Dolly Building. Um, this will require some renovations, security improvements to the Dolly Billion. We expect that cost to be about a million dollars. We would also reconfigure and expand district court pre-trial probation services into that basement area once we got those moved out. And then we'd also add in three to four new first appearance arraignment courts, expansion of the video arraignment booths, holding areas, and attorney client meeting rooms. And we would expect these changes to be in approximately the twenty million dollar range. If we could go to the next slide. And this is a conceptual drawing of what that ground floor could look like if we moved sheriff functions out and were able to expand the pre-trial probation. Uh, its current area is sort of shaded and the deeper purple and then the paler pink is what it would expand out into. And then the four courtrooms, holding sales are down there in the orange and the gray. And then we would leave some area for the sheriff's correction staff. So this again is just conceptual to show if stuff could fit in that area. Next slide, please. And then for the actual lawn justice bed capacity and renovation projects, um, this funding would be outside the scope of the space planning project. As I said, we're just requesting the architectural engineering to start this project. Um, and then at some point, we'll be coming back to the council to request more money. Estimated about a hundred million dollars to do the full bed capacity renovation projects we need, which we would be looking at adding bed capacity to the jail juvenile work center for the jail. Um, remodeling or decommissioning a section of juvenile and then moving juvenile detention to that portion of the building. Remodeling the then vacant juvenile detention to be able to house adult offenders. And then doing a phased approach to renovate the pods and the common areas of the jail and then hardening the jail work center to also be able to house more adult offenders. Next, please. And then other areas have come more recently in our space planning, um where we're good public work through its in operation. They are going to have a package in the baseline of two thousand and twenty three, asking for a hundred thousand dollars to begin a master planning and restoration. Um, look at their facilities as they are not working and are becoming quite outdated. So this will get us started with that. We are not asking for money from ARPA for that portion, but to make you aware that we are looking at this as part of the space plan. Um, also then is the parks, lands, and veg management. They're looking, look, looking at relocating the parks administration offices out of the seventy eighth street site where they're currently located. So those areas could be repurposed for roads and ops. And they are also going to be putting in a package in the baseline budget for two thousand and twenty three and then about seventy five thousand dollars to help with this place planning effort to get it started. And then public health would like to consolidate their current space in C C H. It's more than they need with how they're doing remote work now. And so they have a hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding that was awarded to them for the electronic media records platform that they would like to repurpose towards the efforts of space play on their behalf. Next slide, please. Other items we're also looking at that would be for long term and future planning efforts that are outside the scope of this original project is a new facility for the medical examiner. Elections feels that by the time the next presidential election comes around um in about five years or so um after the next one, in about four to five years, they're going to need to expand. They're running out of room for their current operations. Um, and based on the population, they will need more room. And then the P S C second floor joint lobby would also like to reconfigure their space. And then, of course, we have the jail bed renovation, which I talked about more in slide fifteen above of doing construction implementation of that actual project once we have the architectural engineering completed. So next slide, please. So our recommendation at this point um for priority is number one um to secure about fifteen point five million dollars to relocate C J C and family law annex and the changes that need to happen to the P S C to make that happen. Um, number two is secure approximately ten million dollars for the engineering architectural costs for the bed capacity and renovation project for the jail. And then three would be to have new furniture for the clerk's area for better flow function, fire regulations, and A D A access. And then four would be the additional requests for other future efficiencies um for like the sheriff going to the Dolly Billion, those courthouse renovations I showed you, the jail basement to accommodate more parole probation and other uh first arraignment courts. And then, next slide, please. And so our next steps are to secure the council support for this plan and then secure that additional ARPA funding needed to move these forward. And then we would go ahead and contract with the architectural engineering firms to complete these plans and the bid documents. We'd also work with the furniture vendor to purchase and install furniture needed, notify our non-county tenants once we do determine what plans we're moving forward with of their displacement, and that could be tenants in the Dolly Building and possibly R T C if we do proceed with the first floor of the P S C renovation. Then we go out to bid construction. We'd work with I T to get the computers and the technology equipment moved for these departments. Then we did the physical department moves, update signage, envelopes, business cards, all that stuff that needs to be changed, and then make some public announcements of the new locations where all the departments have gone. And so that ends my presentation. Any questions?
Uh, just to confirm, um, Michelle, the total requested at this point in time from ARPA is twenty five point seven three million?
Let me verify that, too.
Because that is uh down considerably from uh before the Q and A before. So I just wanted to check.
Yeah, Chair Barabin, if I can um provide some commentary here as well. So yes, those are the needs that we actually have, really need to have. If C J C and family law annex have to move, we need to get them in a location, and we need to start that soon. As you know, and the council's um been discussing the jail, we have to get started on that as well with the renovations and getting the architect and engineer. Um, and then, as Michelle mentioned, with the clerk's office, we're having some fire code issues that were just actually brought to our attention within this week, I believe. There are other, you know, efficiencies um through this space planning study that has been identified. And while they're nice to have because it will increase the efficiency and workflow, um, if there's other priorities for the council, then that would be the, I wouldn't say wiggle room, but um, you know, it would be nice if we could set some money still aside for those items as well, but they are not like a critical path forward right now, even though it will increase the efficiency. So while, yes, the twenty five million here and the two hundred and thirty are like, we have, we really need to do those today. There are other space projects that will increase efficiency but are not a must have today.
So I believe it's twenty five point seven three million that you're requesting for today?
Yes, that would be the minimum to get the number one, two, and three bullet there done. If we added in other, any of the other items, the sheriff, the courthouse, the jail basement remodels, that would bring us up to that forty million of our original request.
Whatever, because that is another hundred million, right?
So that, that, as I mentioned, is outside the scope of the space planning project. So those are what we're talking about um is just the things to move the sheriff to Dolly, the renovations in the courthouse, and then the jail basement remodels. This does not go into anything with the law justice bed capacity renovation project besides the architectural engineering. That is outside the scope of the space planning and is its own project. So yes.
Questions from council.
Uh, Madam Chair, I guess comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I'm trying to couch my words so I don't sound too negative. Uh, but this presentation was like all over the, it was so scattershot and all over the world. Uh, what I would have liked to have had a presentation on is what we need to do today, which we know is the jail and possibly the family law annex. Uh, I know we have a last gasp es- effort to uh negotiate and possibly keep the facilities that they have. Um, and then down the road, we'll probably anyway be looking at their, because they already had pending a request to remodel the space that they had. So we went all, we had such a diffuse presentation here. What I would have liked to have done is just focus on those dominos that we know have to fall uh in relocations or uh just focusing on the jail. That's a big enough project. So what, I'm looking at ten million dollars just for engineering and architectural costs. I would have liked to have had a presentation just on what the heck that is. That's ten million dollars, and we don't, we don't open a single mod. You know, it's just architectural and ar- engineering costs. I mean, I, I, I would have really liked a more focused presentation, not on everything we'd like to do possibly with the law library or the three observation rooms for the family law annex, which we definitely do not need. Uh, so I would have liked a little bit more fidelity on a lot less subjects. Um, that would have been a little bit more helpful. You know, after about the fourth project that you went through, I was just glazing over going, why are we talking about this? We don't need to do this today. Um, so anyway, that's, I would, I would have liked a lot more detail on a lot less uh on the, on the absolute immediate projects that are facing us right now, which is the jail and the family law annex and nothing else. And any necessary domino that had to fall. Uh, you already moved animal control? What did that cost? It's already happened. You've already done it.
I think it was right about six.
Yeah, so if I can um help respond here, too. So yes, um, animal control was moved, and that was within budget. There was not a lot of work that needed to done to move their computers down to the Dolly Building. Um, this presentation was in response to council's request for additional information on everything that was incorporated in the forty million. Um, this slide that's before you are the things that need to be done, as I just stated a few minutes ago, that are the immediate needs. Um, the architect and engineering, and Michelle can talk about this in more detail. We can't get more specific costs on what it's going to cost to upgrade and fix the current facility or recommission the juvenile facility without this study. So they are critical in determining the final budget and what's the best path forward um for that project.
So I had, what, what's behind the ten million? Where did that come from? So how did we pull ten million out of the hat to say this is what we think, what we should set aside for law and justice?
So the uh for architectural engineering costs, they range for a project in the state of Washington, seven to ten percent of the scope of the project total cost. We are estimating the total cost to do all of the jail bed renovation project or remodel project to be approximately a hundred thou- a hundred million dollars. And so this is based on ten percent of those costs would be ten million dollars.
Okay, and what's the hundred million based on?
Um, just.
And if, Michelle, if I can, and then you can fill in as well. So we did go over a schedule of the remodeling with council a couple months ago that hit the different areas, which includes, you know, like I said, updating the jails internally, uh recommissioning like the H VAC and all, you know, the, all the systems that are decommissioned and juvenile, hardening the facility, not just externally at the jail work center, but potentially internally. And during that review also, there may be another option that comes up that says, hey, you know what? It'll be less expensive if you build a one story floor right next to the current jail in the parking lot next door. That might actually come out of this, but we can't, we're not experts in all of those areas. This is on best practices. And um, we do this with all of our projects, capital projects that we need to do. Um, but it is based on the initial estimates that the finance team and Michelle and the sheriff's office personnel, when we sat down and looked at those options to remodel and add beds, um, what is a high level cost at this point? And I, I know when we talked about that spreadsheet and the phasing it out over the years, um, it's all ballpark until we get this piece done as well. You know, so this is the, the best judgment based on the expertise that we have on staff and also based on the, the past practice and best business practice.
Mark, we haven't heard from you. Is there anything that you wish to add?
He's shaking his head no on this item.
Okay, very good. Um, other questions from council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilor Ronder.
Um, I, I guess a couple of things. And so if I'm understanding the uh architectural engineering estimate range, seven to ten percent off of a hundred million base, so the ten million sounds like it's the intended to be the upper end of the expenditure. It could be as little as seven million. So there's, there's some wiggle room if I'm understanding correctly. Uh, irrespective of whether the hundred million is, is appropriate or not at this point. Uh, I guess I have a question relative to, to some of the things we've heard and seen recently that are, are sort of nearer term repairs that need to be addressed within the jail. Are, is there money set aside or are we talking about that in the near term? Or is that only going to be addressed to the, the broken windows, the door problems and so forth? I, I guess I, I need a sense of, is that a, a near term or is that part of this longer term after engineering?
Yeah, so the, in the near term, if there's things that are broken and then things are, you know, we, we deal with those now. There are some things that haven't been done, um, and I can't answer why. That's under the um other sheriff's office um jurisdiction. But I think there's things that, more things that we can do right now um as we prepare for the remodel, like painting, fixing the door that's um keeps breaking. We need to get windows that people can't break there. So there, we do when there is a, an issue today, our facilities or a contractor, if it's a specialized skill, we'll go in and fix it now, and we can do a little bit more. But the actual like remodel and all that will be over a longer term process.
So any of those then come out of sort of near term cash rather than this type of funding or longer term?
Yes, and if we find that there's an immediate need that's going to cost a tremendous amount of money, we'll be coming back to council to ask for additional budget for that.
So to uh, Councilor Madhavagir's comments about uh information, I, giving my, my newness, I guess for me would be useful to be able to break pieces into sort of a near, medium, and longer term. And maybe that's already been done, and I'm just not aware of it.
Yeah, we haven't gone into details of, I mean, we come into details on the um, and I don't know if we, I don't think we have that spreadsheet readily available today, but the, the phased approach moving forward, because we can't afford to do everything today. And we are looking at all of our revenue funds to see um how we can pay for it. But yes, there is a scheduled approach, but that will be solidified once we get the architect and engineering and actually know what exactly we're going to need to do.
Okay, and I guess my final question is, is what kind of timeframe are we looking at for this, these expenditures, the engineering architectural work before, before we actually get to the point of starting to be ready to do something?
Michelle, can you answer that? And I don't know, I know you have your, the, the spreadsheet as well, and I think that was included in the phased approach.
So for C J C and family law annex, for that engineering architectural component to get the actual true bid plans, we were expecting that to be about a six month process. We were hoping to start this a couple of months ago. Um, and so sometime early two thousand and twenty three, we'll be ready to go for that construction. The jail bed stuff, that is going to be a longer term um project with the engineering architectural, probably taking about a year from start to finish to complete those efforts of getting everything fine tuned, getting everyone's preferences into it, um, figuring out what's best and what the best options going forward are. So I expect that to be at least a year period for the engineering and architectural for that law and justice bed capacity.
So this twenty six, I'm rounding up, this twenty six million uh would be spent over the next six to twelve months in general?
So um, the fifteen point five million for C J C, the engineering architects will be in the next six months, but then the construction period will be somewhere between six months to a year. We have to have it fully done and then moved in by May of two thousand and twenty four. So we would have all that money spent by May of two thousand and twenty four. Um, and then, yes, about a year period um for the other ones. So again, most stuff will be done by the end of two thousand and twenty three to make all the moves possible.
All right, thank you.
And, and I know Michelle had touched on this as well, but the fifteen point five million for C J C and the family law annex will only be used if they can't stay in their current location and we have to move. We're hoping to have that answer this week. Um, and then once we get the answer, we need to move because our timeline is really cutting tight on when they need to be out of that location and into a new location. So if they can stay where they're at for five, ten years, um, then that money will not be needed for that project. So if they can stay where they're at for five, 10 years, um, then that money will not be needed for that project.
So just to, um, clarify that Kathleen, if, uh, they can stay where, where they are, then that would reduce the total of roughly 26 million by 15.5 million.
That is correct. And if council is supportive of this going on a staff report to a Tuesday meeting for final approval, we will include that in the staff report that this is a, only be used for that purpose. If it's not, then it will not be used. So there will not have to be any further action from council after that.
Well, at, at what, uh, what day will, will they know whether they have to move or not?
We were hoping two weeks ago, but I think the last communication Michelle got, they were hoping to respond sometime this week. Um, but you know, so hopefully it might be this week. We're not a hundred percent sure.
But by our next meeting, they would know, probably.
Probably.
If I could just ask.
And I will say too, they may know, but we're cutting up or coming up to a deadline as well for Tuesday's agenda. So it could be something if you want to add on Tuesday's agenda, or we can put a placeholder and pull it at that time as well.
So if, if you could characterize what's going on, uh, we, we've been back and forth for a couple of years now. And, and this was kind of a, a last gasp, uh, that we heard about that they may be amenable to staying and, and not, uh, requiring the move. I mean, is it, so what's happening? Are they not answering the phone or are they thinking?
They have, they have a new property management firm that's overseeing the building. Is that, isn't that correct, Michelle?
So the current property management, who we've been dealing with, capital development, had given us no quite a number of times. The Fuller Group is taking over the DeAngelo portfolio properties in 2024, mid 2024. So they had gotten wind through our conversation with other property management companies when we were trying to locate a property for CJC that we were looking at moving out. And they're like, why? And we're like, because they will not renew our lease anymore. And so since they're becoming the new property management for DeAngelo, they have reached out to DeAngelo on our behalf as the new one coming in in a year and a half to see if they would allow us to stay. And so we were working with our existing property management company. And now there's a new one coming who has given us a glimmer of hope, but we still haven't heard back. So we don't know if that'll be possible or not.
Other questions from council?
Madam Chair.
Councilor Olson.
Yeah, thanks. I don't, I don't have a ton of questions. I think most of them have been asked. I had a lot of questions about how we got to the numbers, but I think that's been addressed. So thank you for that, even though we're still, it's still a best guess. Um, but the numbers are big, so they're important to us to try to figure out where they come from. Um, and I do appreciate the detail, uh, and the work that's been done and the opportunities. I know we have an opportunity here to make some significant improvements in our facilities. And I know since I've been on the council, this has been an ongoing conversation about how we pay to make the facilities upgrades that are necessary, uh, and we have an opportunity to do that. So I hope we take advantage of it. Just from a, a process perspective, I think it sounds like based on the public service center and the CJC situation that maybe we put a placeholder on the agenda for Tuesday. And if we hear something, that's great. If not, we can, you know, uh, continue it to another, uh, another meeting. But, um, maybe we hear something between now and then. I don't know. But I appreciate the efforts of working through the new property management company to see if we can actually stay. That would save us about 15 million dollars. So it's important.
Other comments?
Well, I, the stage that we're at, I'm, I definitely want to get moving on our jail. And we need to take concrete steps and allocate the appropriate money. Uh, this is, uh, an opportunity, as Counselor Olson just said, to finally address these issues and get a good solid start. Uh, where we're at now, that, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about $250,000 on furniture, but, uh, in the grand scheme of things, that's a small allocation. I'm prepared to, uh, you know, support two and three, uh, right now. Uh, and hopefully by the end of the week or maybe another week, uh, we'll know what's going on with our family law annex. And, and again, that for those that have been paying attention, they've been asking for years to renovate the space that they're already in, and there is going to be a big price tag to that. So that's still one way or the other, whether they stay or not, there's going to be more work to be done for them. So anyway, it looks solid enough that, and it's a swag, I understand it on the 10 million allocation. And I, I absolutely support, uh, doing that. So we can start moving forward. We, we need to get that engineering and architectural, uh, work done. And so we can break ground on any new structures that we need to, uh, to build. It, it is past due. We, we need to get to this.
So let me attempt to summarize and correct me where I'm incorrect. Uh, your motion, I think it was a motion, would be to approve 10.23 million for ARPA funding as described with a placeholder of the 15.5 million on Tuesday's agenda, depending the outcome of, and further information that is, uh, given on their ability to stay where they are. Is that roughly it?
I think that's, thank you. I wasn't actually thinking of a motion, but that, that is a fair, um, characterization of what I said, and I can convert that to a motion.
Okay, thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And it is unanimous for support of that motion. Um, Kathleen, would you please describe a placeholder on Tuesday's agenda? How will that work?
What I'm going to do is we'll get a staff report that incorporates all three. But number one will be contingent on if we have to move forward, um, with the move. And if the move doesn't happen or is not required, then that money will be returned and taken off of a placeholder and be returned to the ARPA available funding.
Okay, very good. Um, any other questions before we move on to the next item of the North County EMS station? Okay, let's go. Um, Sean Ford, are you with us this morning?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, yeah.
What questions, let me just ask you, do you have, um, anything introductory that you'd like to say? That was a bit of a dangling question from before?
I guess I, that would be on, you know, from the council, I would, any questions, make sure everyone's familiar with the project. Um, I know I actually presented this initially to the former council chair last April, so a year ago, April. So this has been a while in the works, but I'm not sure all the counselors had an opportunity until now to be aware of this project. So it might've been a surprise to some, uh, but I've been, been trying this for, working on this for a while. So again, this is, we are attempting to replace our facility in Farger Lake, which serves, you know, obviously in the rural north part of the county for EMS services. We are a public agency, which you all know, and your, one of your other hats is you serve as the board members for EMS District One, um, which is where we serve. And we were like everybody else surprised by the cost of construction, uh, to replace this facility. It exceeded, far exceeded our expectations and the cost for what is actually a very small facility. It was only 5,000 square feet total and the low average bid came at about five and a half million dollars for a project, which our engineers and architects, when we got that phase done and the cost estimators, had an estimation for a total cost of around three and a half million to four million dollars. And it came back at five and a half million. Uh, we don't have that amount of money on hand, um, because of the way we are funded, we will not be able to get that money on hand. Um, some of the questions the counselors had, which I haven't been able to get to yet, was what are other revenue sources that we've, we look for, for other than our, our taxation? So I'll just go through those real quick. Um, um, we have tried the USDA, so they have both a grant program and a loan program. Uh, the grants the USDA has available to the state of Washington for the entire state, they get $200,000. So even if we were awarded, it'd be a very small amount. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a lot of money. Uh, they did have a loan program. Uh, so the loan program requires a general obligation bond as collateral. Uh, in the state of Washington EMS districts is what we are, have no statutory authority to issue bonds. So we can't do that. We can't even go out for our own bond, which would be another source of funding for this facility because we're not allowed by statute to do so. Um, one question that came up was the local program, which is to the state of Washington in the treasurer's department. Um, as our governance is we're an intra-local agency, we don't exist in our own. We are three separate taxing districts. One of the taxing districts would have to apply for the local program on behalf of the organization as a whole and actually be the loan holder for that. So it would be a liability for whoever that was. Um, so we can't do that directly, but one of our, under local partners could do that. And then the, the last one was, and we talked about this in here before, was the state commerce, um, grants. And unfortunately, Clark County is not poor enough, I guess, to be, lack of a better term, for us to qualify for, for that funding. So those are the other funding sources. Um, we are, a- as you know, we, we are an EMS, like I said, EMS district. Uh, we collect our, our, our tax revenue through a regular EMS levy, which has a maximum rate of 50 cents per thousand. And then every three years, our, um, residents also vote upon themselves an excess levy. Um, we use that excess levy and that regular levy just for operations. All of our capital funding, which this would be, comes through a special program through the feds called GEMT. And then, um, any tax we get from timber revenue. So we don't get a lot of capital income. So that's where we're at. Um, that's why we're asking for the ARPA funds. Felt like this fed in, filled in good with ARPA requirements as this came about as COVID. Obviously we were here every day through COVID, providing vaccinations, testing. And our current station was not COVID safe. Um, it's a mobile home and any patient that came to see us had to walk right into our living area. Um, so we have to build a better facility than that. So that's kind of the, you know, direct COVID ARPA, you know, relationship there. So other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions any council may have about this project.
Thank you, Sean. I know my main questions, um, had been on other funding or including loans that would be available. And, uh, thank you for researching that as you have, uh, you've answered that very thoroughly. Um, what other questions does council have?
Do we, do we have Mark on? Uh, Mark was originally the one that thought there may be some, uh, alternatives for funding this. I, I want to be clear, I fully support this. You know, that ARPA funds, uh, are appropriate for things that'll last for generations. You know, ca- capital expenditures that we could never afford otherwise that became available. So this is a perfect opportunity. But, but Mark Gasaway had suggested there may be other programs that were eminent that could fund this. Uh, that was my only concern. I want to build this and I want to use our ARPA funds for this, but not if, uh, there's other, uh, state or federal funding that could be available.
Uh, Councilor Medjivje, this is Mark Gasaway, Clark County Finance Director. Uh, Chief Ford and I have spent a little bit of time doing research. And right now we have not found anything that would allow us to do this. Um, there, you know, there may be upcoming funding in the future through the infrastructure bill. We just don't know what those parameters are yet. And so what we've found is that this facility is such a, a niche type facility. It doesn't, um, fit within the, I, I guess, the, the, the nice silos that a lot of funding has come out for. And so, um, no, at this point, we've not found anything that would provide this level of funding. Um, at least from a grant program.
Super. Thank you.
And is 2.5 million a reasonable estimate at this point?
Yes, uh, it, we believe so. It's going up about 2% a month. That was an estimate from when we got the bids in June, May or June. So it could be a little bit more, but I'm just going to leave it at two and a half million. Um, we're actually still waiting for the final building permit from the county. Uh, we're working on a couple of things. We can't even start till we get that, but it's, it's basically shovel ready other than that. So that's as close as I can get. I mean, we're, we're really right there. We've done every step, just waiting for that building permit.
Thank you. Other questions from council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilor Rylander.
I had the opportunity several weeks ago to go out and visit and tour the existing facility in, yeah, Colton. We talked about all, any alternatives they've explored from other types of buildings to prefabs to host of, of other things. And based on those discussions, I, I'm as comfortable as I can be that they've explored every avenue. And that without this funding, then it's unlikely to happen. And I think it, it absolutely needs to happen.
Would you like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we approve the 2.5 million ARPA funding for the replacement of the EMS facility in the Farger Lake area.
I would second that.
Further discussion, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick.
Thank you.
And we'll move now to the YMCA pool project in Battleground. Um, I don't know that, uh, uh, Mike Westby, Eddie White may be available to answer questions. Uh, Councilor Rylander, you were the counselor who, um, made sure that this $1 million was put on the list. So I don't know if you would like to open the discussion or a staff person?
We, uh, we do have the representatives from the YMCA in the, uh, meeting room. So they can certainly address the topic. I'd like to preset the stage in that, uh, Councilor Medjivje, of course, has worked on this in the past. And this has been discussed over the last several years with the council, different council members at different times. So it's not an old project. It, it actually is an older project. It's not a brand new, uh, ask upfront. And it is something that we believe that would benefit not just the battleground area, but much of the North County. So if it's okay, uh, I'll turn the, uh, with the mic over to the representative from YMCA council chair if that's okay.
You know, I'm sorry, I had coached Eddie in advance that he would be available to answer questions. So we're going to do it that way if you don't mind. Um, so what questions are there from council? My big one, and I don't know who is best, uh, able to answer this, it might be Kathleen. What is the status of Battleground, the city, in terms of their council, um, support for the pool?
They are looking, um, doing some review right now on what, um, cost would be for permitting um, and other areas of their permitting process. And we'll be presenting that, I believe, on September 6th if they're ready. And if the council approves, that would be their contribution to the pool would just be the waiving of permitting fees.
There's a slight, this is, uh, Mike Westby. So been working on this for, uh, several years. And there's a slight modification, uh, to those comments. And that would be that the request that we made, uh, of the city was to include the mitigation of fees, but not exclusively the mitigation of fees. And the amount of dollars that we have talked about for the last couple of years has been a million. And when we made that request in 2020 of the council, council member, um, uh, I think it was Shane Berman, said, it would be great to know what the county's going to do because the county is going to have a lot of benefit of this facility of people living outside of Battleground who will utilize it, find out what the councils, what the, what the county would do. With COVID, that's been a long process to try to figure that out. Uh, they are, they have requested that we make a presentation, that it include all of the fact finding uh, on the, uh, on the permit, the, the opportunities to waive some permits and some fees. But the request is not exclusively that. The quest, request is beyond that. And then I, one other point here that I think is, is very relevant and timely is this is a unique opportunity where the city has been, whatever they've been telling the county, what you guys from council to council, what they've been telling us in their meetings repeatedly with consistency is, ask the county what they're going to do and come back to us with that. And then the county has said, well, no, the city really needs to set the bar here. really needs to set the bar here, you know, and we'll, we'll see what they're going to do. So we've been in this sort of, I think, fair-minded brinksmanship, who's going to be the first to lead? And I can tell you with confidence that the, the city of Battleground told us pursuant to their, their due diligence and consideration of this latest request to find out what the county's position was. And so you do have an opportunity to lead and to leverage. And that amount, if you, if you don't act today, in some fashion, it's positive towards this project. I think that amount will be, as it was described by Ms. Otto, it'll be no greater than the sum of the parts of fee waiving. If you are able to act appropriate to the request that we made two years ago of this council, which was for $1 million. If you act at that level, I think you send a message back to them and they've asked for you to do that. At least they asked us to do that to, as an emissary to ask you that question, to set that bar for them. That allows them to do more than what has been described here. So I just wanted to compliment the comments that were made. I think they're accurate, but, but not not sufficient for a total answer.
Well, to compliment your remarks further as well, when I stated as I did that the county would benefit from a pool there, that was a couple of years ago, frankly, before I was aware that just nine miles down the road, Ridgefield was going to be having a large aquatic center and pool and that the Y would be involved in that. And, and I, I didn't know that at the time. I don't know the extent to which that has changed the equation for Battleground at this point. But that's up to them to say, not for the county to decide on their behalf, in my opinion. Other comments from counsel?
Madam Chair?
And Chair, Chair Barvin, if I, I just want to clarify a quick. So the communication I got was from the city manager and there was no request to me from the city manager to bring this back to council for additional. It was simply that they were looking at waiving permit and impact fees for consideration. So there was no formal request through my office to present any recommendation or encourage the council to provide any funding.
Thank you. That's important. Counselor Olson?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I know that this has been an on-long-term, you know, multi-year request for from Battleground or from the Y or from the coordination of folks who are trying to get the Y to Battleground. And Counselor, or Chair Barvin, you're right, there's a beautiful, large YMCA facility that's going to be breaking ground in Ridgefield at the end of this year. And they didn't come to us asking for money. The city of Ridgefield, the Y, the community of Ridgefield found a way to get this project funded. And they're going to be breaking ground at the end of the year. I support these projects, but this, in my view, is not county business. This, we should not be involved in this. This is between the city of Battleground. It's in the city of Battleground. It's going to be built. It's my understanding, I don't know this to be true, but it's my understanding that the city of Ridgefield donated some land for the project, which probably did help get it, you know, to fruition. But I think, I think it's up to the city of Battleground and those who want to build the Y to find a way to fund it. And I, I don't believe it's our, our role to get involved in this. And I certainly don't think ARPA money is the way to go. And we have so many other opportunities to to put that money into different areas. So I, I would not support us being involved in this project. Certainly, if there are other ways for me to support the project, I will, but not in this role.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Rylander?
To your prior comment a few moments ago about the facility going in at Ridgefield, I would ask that the representative from the YMCA address whether the facility in Battleground either competes or is complementary, or provide some background information.
Thanks. Sorry about that little technical issues. So yeah, we did market studies on both those locations to be sure that we weren't competing with each other, that they were actually complementing one another. The facilities are, will be arranged in a way that will complement one another. We usually look at drive time as well. You mentioned being nine miles apart. We usually look at about a 10, 10-minute drive time for our facilities for the majority of the members using that facility. So this fits really well. I will say, we do have currently, you know, members from Battleground driving down to the Clark County Family YMCA, which I'm currently at. And so it'll give us a little bit of relief as well. It'll also allow us to, to work with the schools on the swim teams. Currently Battleground and Prairie Schools are swimming at our facility there in Orchards. And if I may, I'd also address, you know, some of the questions about funding for, for Ridgefield as well, just to get some, some clarity there. The city has identified land for that project. It is not fully funded at this time, and we will be doing a fundraising and probably borrowing some money to get that, that facility built. It's not the typical model that we do, but it is, it is a model that YMCA has used. Typically, we go in for a capital request like we've done throughout this process, have all the money ready to go. But we've got a city that's very excited and we're excited to be a part of that city as well. So that they're a little bit different models between what we're doing in Ridgefield and what we're doing, asking to do in Battleground.
And Madam Chair, I have some comments.
Counselor Medjibee, go ahead.
So I've, I've been working on this as the YMCA asked me as a representative of 4th District for a few years now. I think everything that's been said are, are really good points. And I appreciate what Counselor Olson has said. But I disagree just slightly that this is strictly a city issue. And I, if we were to commit this money, which I think we should, again, getting to these legacy issues, you know, we could be a part of something that'll be in place for generations. I think ARPA can put us over the top for that. But it's, it's not a done deal by allocating this money. And, and we'll hear from Battleground eventually. But I just want to give you some background on that. It's kind of been touched on. You know, the first thing I heard was the city administrator was in fact promising that $1 million and basically in permit waivers. And then the council, county, the city council backed away from that, saying that was out of turn. And it's not the current administrator, I don't believe. And then from some private conversations off and on with different people within the city, I've really got mixed messages as to whether they support it or not. And some of it was, well, what's the county going to do? Is the county going to help? And, and I suggested from my point of view that we should, because it's a regional asset. Now, you know, I come from a family that had four kids that swam. And very, very few schools on the West Coast, for some reason, high schools particularly, they don't have pools. You know, those are amenities that come from the cities or private clubs, if you will. And is, swim teams are a great thing. Outdoor pools are tough. City of Camas right now is really struggling on what to do with their parks and, and their pool. But this is a huge amenity that's critical for high school swimmers. And one of the discussions I had had with the WMCA right, right away was, what do you, what does it do for the community? What does it do for equity issues? How do people afford your family memberships? Because they're, they're not inexpensive. And they do have quite a program in place, sliding fees and not scholarships per se, but they do try to make the pool available and the facilities available to the entire community, not just to those that can join. And, you know, both the YWCA and the YMCA are well-known for that nationally. So I really think that if we were to commit this money, it's the right thing to do. It would be in place for generations. I think the city council, but I'm just guessing, for Battleground will then coalesce about what position they're going to take. There's been a lot of issues with land swaps. This came into discussion with the Cedars process where we were conserving there. And I would tell you, the good thing about all these discussions is the city of Battleground is really now doing some earnest park planning on behalf of the city. They were quite a bit behind on doing all that. So I guess the message I'm trying to, to convey is let's, let's signal to them that we support this as a regional amenity. It's not going to compete with Ridgefield, although our high schools may compete amongst one another and have a home pool. I really think we should signal to them that we think this is a valued commitment for not just Battleground, but the whole surrounding unincorporated area. And it, again, will, it'll be our legacy that we were able to put this over the top and move this forward. I think Battleground will coalesce around that and move forward. We'll know soon enough. And if it, if it falls apart, we'll still have our money to spend elsewhere.
Sensing that there is a division on counsel about this, and given the fact that Battleground is going to be considering aspects of this at their September 6th meeting, which I believe is next Tuesday, there's a little bit in common there with the family law annex in that there's some decision points coming up on the part of the, the other body very, very soon. So my question to counsel is, would there be comfort on your part, or do you feel it is appropriate on our part to put in a million dollars as a placeholder for a future agenda to be decided, depending on what we learn from the Battleground September 6th meeting?
Madam Chair? I would second that. I think it signals to Battleground and it leaves options open depending on what they ultimately decide.
I heard three counselors at once. So Counselor Olson, you're next.
Thank you. I actually have a question. And I think Mark Gasaway is there. I don't know that we've gotten specific clarity from him yet on whether this type of project qualifies for ARPA funding. So I would, before we maybe even have any further discussions, that we get really, really clear on whether this is allowed under the ARPA funding guidelines?
Counselor Olson, and the answer to that is, it depends. It depends on how the, the contract is structured. So if, if this were approved, then we would work with the the final guidance to see if we can structure it in a way that it would be allowable.
So I don't want to spend a lot of time going through this process if we're not sure that there's a way to structure it, that it would be allowable. Just personally, I think it's a lot, it'd be a waste of everyone's time. So I, I don't know if there's a way to find that out before we continue having this deliberation. Because to go through this and then find out we can't structure it in a way that is allowable would be a bit of a disappointment for everyone involved, I think.
And just to kind of give a little bit of background, what we found out with, when we were trying to look for grants for the North Country EMS, that it, a lot of it depends on the populations that are served. And we would have to do a study on the, how the populations in that area, the service area would be affected. And that would be some work that would have to be done. We, we don't have that information currently available.
And I would just add that, I mean, it doesn't take much creativity. I mean, from Golden Sneakers on, everyone recognizes that these recreational facilities have a direct nexus to health and well-being of the populace, which has been completely decimated by the pandemic. It is not a stretch to realize that, you know, Medicare supports this, Medicaid supports this. It's directly related to the health and welfare of our community. I can't imagine that it wouldn't qualify depending on how it's structured.
Madam Chair?
Counselor Rylander?
Just a reminder that when I brought this forward originally, I did outline the fact that we are a number of unknowns yet still here. And as you might recall, I provided a suggestion on some contingencies that we step forward, do we send the signal that we are prepared based on a set of factors. The city of Battleground must participate. The fundraising that's going to be done at the state and the national level has to be successful. Given the fact that we have until the end of 2024 to actually allocate the funds and into the end of 2026 to actually spend the funds. Again, the contingency I suggested was that they have all of these agreements and the funds all lined up by December 31st of 2024. And, and if all of those things were done, then we're in. So I, I recognize that we have some unknowns, whether it be at the Battleground City Council. I, I'm convinced that if the county, even with these contingencies, will send the signal that we are prepared to back and support the program, so long as these other things come into play, that that will potentially have a positive impact on the actions of the Battleground City Council. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Counselor Lance, we haven't heard from you yet. Do you have a thought to weigh in, Miss?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I'd be in favor of if contingencies are met, potentially reserving some funds for this. I do feel that there are still some unknowns. And while I hear the request for the council to lead and hope that the city of Battleground will follow, I'm I'm not really compelled by that argument. I think that this is something that I want to hear from the city of Battleground with one voice, not individual counselors, or someone said this to someone else, that there is support for this. So my inclination would be to take up this discussion again soon in order to potentially reserve the funds. But to do so after we hear about the city of Battleground's conversation and where they ended up as a deliberation and the decision of the council as a body on what to do so that we can better understand where they are. Since that conversation is next week, we don't have to hold very long.
I, I don't know that we're, they're going to decide anything next week. I, I thought you were making the motion, Madam Chair, and I seconded it to go ahead and approve this contingent on, you know.
Actually, I, I didn't make a motion for a contingency. I, I, I'm not sure that I even support the notion of a contingency, because when the time comes to, or two weeks or two months, or however long down the road, we're going to have discussions back and forth and indecisively, was the contingency met or not? And that could be a very indecisive kind of discussion. So I, I would not support that. I, I think we should go ahead and if we want to hold off on it, until after the meeting of Battleground on the 6th, I think we could do that, but then make a decision very shortly thereafter. Since that is a Tuesday, our next meeting on this would be the same day, would it not, Kathleen?
Tuesday's meeting is only to approve a staff report. We can certainly put it on a Wednesday council time agenda, the day after their meeting.
Okay. Now, that would work for me. I, I just, I'm not making it as a motion right now, but does that have any feeling of being a good way to go with a part of the rest of the council?
I would much more favor just approving it. All the contingencies remain. That sends a clean signal, not only to the YMCA that we've, we've filled that piece of their pie chart for their funding, but also Battleground. I, I don't know that we'll hear back in, from Battleground. I just, because of having participated in this process for the last couple of years, you know, we've never gotten anything clearly from them. And I don't know that we will in the future. And I, and I mentioned Camas, they're still struggling with what to do with their parks and, and pool dilemma that was created. I, I think we should, let's just cleanly vote and support it. If you don't support it, then If you don't support it, then I guess we could revisit it if we still have money in ARPA to allocate. But, so I would make the motion that we do approve this. It's still just a placeholder at this point.
I would second that.
Counselor Lance, you had a comment before the motion was made.
Yeah, before the motion was made. And since this is a work session, I'm also unclear if we actually should be doing motions. But I was going to suggest that we table this conversation until next Wednesday after we hear from the city of Battleground. And perhaps we could ask the county manager to try to have a, you know, to schedule a conversation with the city manager so that we could bring information to that work session.
That's my, that's my direction as well, but we have a motion to.
And that is mine as well. And you're right, we do have a motion and we're going to vote on it now. So those in favor of supporting Battleground Aquatic Center with the $1 million at this time, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? No.
No.
So it's a two to three decision there. Is there a different suggestion than that we hold off until Wednesday, the 7th, when we hear a report from Kathleen Otto?
I'd support that direction.
Yeah, I will second that direction.
I have a question about that because we ran into this a couple of years ago where the city administrator, administrator represented something and then the council didn't support it. We really need, if, if your goal is to hear from the city of Battleground, we need to hear from the, their city council, not their city administrator.
Madam Chair.
I was just going to say, I support both actually with Kathleen making the contact. And I certainly would be listening to their dialogue. Counselor Olson.
Yeah, I think this kind of just goes to the point that I was making earlier. If the city of Battleground is not fully behind this project in whatever way they can be, if they're, you know, willy nilly, or they're not sure, they don't have a strong support on the council, if the community is not behind it, I don't think it's our role here to be the leader. I think certainly these, if, if, I wouldn't even think about approving it until all these other things were in place. We don't, this is not our role to be the leader here. This is Battleground's project. They need to be the leader. And if we could come in later with money, I would be more tempted to consider that. But I don't know how we got in this place of, of being asked to be the leader. They should be the cheerleaders. They should be the ones that are supporting this project. They should be the ones that are being creative about how they fund it and where they put it. So we don't get some clear direction from them, or they don't have a clear direction as a community, then I don't think this is our role.
Yeah, so I do want to answer that, Madam Chair. City of Battleground is pretty small. And I mean, it, there's only a few square miles of city. This is a, a regional project. This is a county project. This is going to impact the region around it as it grows. And it is growing, just as the center and Richfield are growing. So it, it is a county project. It's as much as a Battleground. It's not just going to be within the city, buried downtown where only the city of Battleground will use it. That's why I suggested we take a leading role.
Madam Chair.
I love this. I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
To support Counselor Medjig's comments, the city of Battleground is a population of what, 20, a little over 20,000 people within its small boundaries. There, I, I live, I have a mailing address for Battleground. I'm in the urban growth area of Battleground, but I'm in unincorporated Clark County. There are a significant number of residents in that area who are in unincorporated Clark County. Even saying that, the citizens of Battleground are a part of Clark County. So we're representing the entire citizenry of Clark County, whether they're in the city or whether they're in an unincorporated county. And so I, I understand you would like more clarity. Sorry, so would I. But beyond that, this is a, a regional project that will be around for decades and the leadership of the county is significant because we represent both constituencies. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Counselor.
One last thing and then, or unless, for me, one last thing. I hear that city of Richfield is in the same situation. Of course, not only city residents are going to take advantage of the Y there, but we also have other cities in this county that may want to do the same thing. And, and all of these, all of these projects serve greater than their particular community, but it doesn't mean that they don't, they shouldn't be the lead. I just, CAMUS could maybe want to come to us for some money for their pool now. No, no, that is not our responsibility. So anyway, I've, I've said enough. We'll talk next week hopefully.
I know we had three thumbs up for postponing the discussion with a placeholder of a million dollars for next Wednesday. Since we have the three thumbs up on that, let's go ahead and, and do that. The other motion did fail, so I think that's where we are. So that is for the agenda on the 7th, correct, Kathleen?
That is correct.
Okay.
And just to, just to be clear, I was giving a thumbs up that if other cities came to us for help, we would help them, especially if it was something that would benefit the entirety of the county. I, I nevertheless would like to keep this alive, so I am voting to put this over until we hear from the city of Battleground. And I'm hoping they actually listen to this and, and see this as a signal that we're just waiting for their leadership for the city to move forward on this. If they don't, then I guess this will, this will not pass. But I'm hopeful that we can keep this alive and moving forward.
Thank you. And that makes four thumbs up. So that's, that's good. And Eddie and, and Mike, I, if you wish to pass that on to Battleground to take a look at our discussions today, that might be helpful to them in understanding where the county stands on this. So with that, unless there is anything else for the good of the order on our work sessions, we would be finished with the work session.
Chair Barman, you actually have one more. Last Tuesday, the council opted to table the small grants, if you can pull back that spreadsheet, and the nonprofit grants for a conversation today because there was information that was shared about other potential opportunities with DOC grant programs. So it was pulled from last week's agenda to be included in the conversation today. So it's a small grant program.
And is this for both the nonprofits and business?
Yes, they were on one staff report. And so the entire staff report was removed. And then Mark did talk about the DOC small business grants that were available in the state. I think it was 70 million. That was just opened that same week. And I, he sent in an email to the council outlining the timeline on that and the link to their website. And he's also sitting here with me if there's any specific questions on that.
And I sent that link, not the one for Mark, but I went to the website and sent that link far and wide to those involved with economic development and business, business development in the county. So I know that at least one of the entities is going to be applying for a small business grant. So there is some follow-up from, from that, which is a good thing for those state funds to come to Clark County. And maybe there's much more that Mark or others know about. Mark, do you want to kick this off?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted, again, following council's direction, just wanted to provide you with the information of what else is available out there. This program did kick off last week. It's open to all businesses, nonprofits, particularly those that are seeking funds or have not received previous funding. So I, I guess my thought is maybe we see what impact this program has, we could possibly table this for a future discussion and, and see what the results of applying for the Department of Commerce program first. Again, it's, it's up to council's decision. And I think it was mentioned, there's no guarantee of who will receive this. Certainly if we looked at a proportional share for Clark County based on population, we should be able to receive, you know, six to seven million dollars of that 70 million. So they have to apply. If they don't apply, they can't receive it, so.
Madam, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor.
So Mark, if, do, do we know that there will be a report issued as to who applied? Or at least will there be some sort of reporting back? And do we know when?
We could request that, absolutely.
Because I, I would be open to tabling this to down the road, but I'd like to make it tie into so we know whether people applied or businesses applied or not. And because again, we, we don't have to be in a rush to spend our ARPA money. We, we do have plenty of time and make maximum use of it. So I, I would suggest that we push this down the line for whatever it works out to a month or six weeks or something to get some sort of report back.
I believe the closing date is in September for applications. It was, I think, 30 days. And we could ask at that time what, what their applications were, a list of applications to see if Clark County businesses or nonprofits applied for.
So if we push this back sometime into October?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest that we push this back sometime into October, then we might have a report back mid-October.
Yeah, that's, that's likely, yes.
And Mark, would you be willing to make that inquiry of the DOC because they don't, don't plan a report just to come to the county automatically on who applied?
I would make that request on behalf of the council, sure.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. So I do want to separate these, we had hoped would be separate allocations. And that was the original discussion. And with Mark on board, you know, most of the money from that first two million went to nonprofits, which do amazing work in our community. And the, and the goal was to infuse this ARPA money where it, where there had not been any other relief, get it into the community right away to save these nonprofits so they can continue. And likewise with the businesses, you know, some, some of them can't wait. A lot of them already went out of business last year or two years ago. But Mark, off the top of your head, do you recall what amount was actually allocated of the two million to small business? Cause there were precious few because their real inability to compete with the nonprofits for need. Do you have that number off the top of your head?
I don't, Counselor. We'd have to go through and take a look at the list. I, I know there were a few, absolutely, but.
Yeah, so the point is though, we should separate these issues and I really hope that we can still advocate for at least the million for the second round of the nonprofits. They're doing such essential work. We had hoped that there would be a second round. And I don't see any reason at this point to defer that or delay that. I don't disagree that maybe we should wait to see if Commerce takes care of our small businesses. To roll out these programs takes time, whether we're doing it or the state's doing it, or we're doing it on, on behalf of the state. I mean, they each take time and I'm hoping that we don't lose nonprofits and businesses in the interim. But I would like to focus on approving the one million at least for a second round of nonprofit grants.
If I could respond to that, Counselor Medjig. The 70 million that's available from Department of Commerce is also available to nonprofits. It's not restricted to small businesses. It's open to all. So they have the same opportunity to apply as well as small businesses. And just one further comment, when we did the initial CRF programs earlier, which would be the year earlier, we did allocate 10 million specifically to small businesses without nonprofits. So we have done the initial focus on small businesses. We kind of turned in the second round to the nonprofits with a few small businesses. But this Department of Commerce funding is available to all, to both small businesses and nonprofits, so.
So is it capped? I mean, it's for the, that amount is for the entire state, for the whole world of nonprofits and small businesses? What are the grant amounts that are going to be allocated?
I, I can't answer that question. That's Department of Commerce that would be able to answer that.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Olson.
Yeah, I would concur with Counselor Rylander, I think, and given Mark's comments and Counselor Medjig that, that we hold off and see what grants were applied for and, and awarded through the Department of Commerce. And then Kathleen, I also wonder if we couldn't, and Chair Barman, you already said you sent the link out to a lot of folks, but could we do a press release encouraging Clark County nonprofits and small businesses to apply for this Department of Commerce grant? Let's get it out, make people, make sure everyone knows it's available so that we have as many Clark County businesses and nonprofits applying as possible?
Yes, absolutely. We'll work with our communication staff today and get something out.
Especially with that deadline imminent.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
And they have a, a job in getting their application together. The Workforce Development Group has been working ever since the, the day the announcement came out. And it's just now coming together and they've been working on it rapidly, but they, you need to get together the recommendations and it is a, a process. So yeah, getting that out right away is important. That's great. Okay, I think, can we have a thumbs up on holding the small business and the nonprofit for a future date?
Yes, and then for the record, I'm still in favor of keeping it even after we know the Commerce grants are grabbed, but yes.
I didn't hear that.
I said, and for the record, I'm still in favor of keeping that two million in place for our small business and nonprofits here in Clark County, but it'll be interesting to know how the other grants play out, so thanks.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, ditto on that. And so do we have three thumbs up? Okay, very good. And now, does that conclude all of the topics for ARPA for today, Kathleen?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So with that in mind, we are ready to bring this to a close and move to our council time agenda. And I hate to say this, but your chair really needs a glass of water. So I am going to ask that we take a break until 10:35 and I will see you back here then.